Good evening and welcome to the April 17th, 2025 meeting of the Milford School Committee. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Milford TV and any copies can be obtained through request of this board or through Central Office. Looks like we're starting tonight with a little performance from the Milford High Music Department. And I believe we have Sarah Rode here.
Hi, I'm Sarah Rode. I teach here at the high school. I'm also at Memorial in Woodland this year. It's my 10th year in Milford Public School District. This is our chamber choir. It's our most advanced choral ensemble out of the five choral ensembles we have here at Milford High. Yeah, we're gonna sing a song. It might not make a lot of sense because we're singing "Goodnight Sweetheart" and you're just starting your night. We're just kind of ending our night. I just put my two kids in the car with my husband, so they're going to do their nighttime. But we sang this as part of the Arts Extravaganza back in February. It was our second annual Arts Extravaganza, which was a really great event, featuring all of the arts and practical arts and videography and photography and culinary arts, all the arts programs that we offer here at Milford High School. So our rep is in kind of a funny spot as we get ready for our Pops concert May 20th, so I figured this would be a fun, nice way to start, but also as we kind of exit. Let's see, what else was I supposed to say? We're really lucky at Milford High School as the students come up through. We have a really fantastic music department across the district, especially at our K to 2 level, where they start. So these are the best of the best. This is our most advanced ensemble, like I said, but they've had such a rounded music education as they've come up through K to 12. So when we get them, they're already well-versed in music education. So they've worked really hard at Milford High School and in Chamber Choir, but they've also done all of the work before then, and that's thanks to our incredible music department through all the grades. Yeah, so without further ado, let's sing "Goodnight Sweetheart." Not that one!
(singing)
(singing) (singing) (singing) (singing) (singing) (singing) (singing) (singing) (singing) (singing) (singing) (singing) (singing) (singing)
Comments?
Awesome!
Thoughts?
Amazing job!
Thanks for having us!
Great job harmonizing! That was awesome! It's not done overnight! That's great!
Any seniors in the group? Oh wow! Yeah, alright, excellent. Any seniors care to share their plans for next year?
I'm going to Boston University in the fall to major in Education and Ministry.
Excellent.
That's amazing.
I'm going to a Daniel College in Boston to major in Health Sciences.
Excellent.
I'm going to Northeastern in Boston to major in Cybersecurity.
Excellent.
I'll be at Assumption studying Nursing. I'll be at Assumption studying something in the vet field.
I'll be at Manhattanville University studying Musical Theater.
Well, good. So thank you everybody for sharing that and great performance and good luck to everybody. If you continue on in your singing, you certainly have a bright future, that's for sure. So, but thank you very much.
Thank you!
Last time I heard that song was on Solid Gold with Sean Anah. You guys probably don't know who Sean Anah is. You know who Sean Anah.
Of course.
You guys did such a better job than Sean Anah.
There's no Bowser.
I don't even know what he's talking about.
He's a little Bowser going.
I heard it!
Excellent.
Look up Sean Anah!
Thank you for coming.
Alright, thank you guys!
Alright, that brings us on to announcements. I'll hold on for a second. It's gonna get a little louder. Alright, we'll move on to announcements, correspondence, and distribution. I have one thing, but I'll let everyone else go first. Anyone have anything? Do you have anything?
Uh, no.
Alright, so the only thing that I will share is that, this is a follow-up of a previous discussion. The Massachusetts Department of Health was here at the high school to do an assessment based on the water damage that came from the roof leaks back in March, February, whenever the large incident happened. So they were here, the report was released on 4/11, and just a couple points, they came, did a visual inspection for water damage and microbial growth, and a couple notes that I thought were important to share with the community was that they did note that all building components are made out of non-porous materials such as concrete, cement, and tile, which are not conductive to mold growth. So they did not find any mold or any other visible contaminants such as mold, and they found everything to be dry and there were no associated odors. So essentially what they had for us was recommendations of continuing plans to make the roof repairs, which are scheduled, I believe, to start next week, and also following through with cleaning up and painting water stains, replacing ceiling tiles as they become stained after leaks, and this is a quote from the Mass Department of Public Health, they did recommend that we continue to use receptacles and trash bins and buckets to collect water as needed. So I just found that interesting. I'm a little disappointed they let go of the cone taped to the handrail idea. I thought that was a good one and I was hoping that would stay, but they did not recommend that, but...
That was a physics project.
That was... I want to write back and ask them if we can include that. So, anyway, they were here, they were happy, obviously, with what they found, and they understand that the district's need for a new building and roof repairs and all that stuff, so that's the...
If I can just comment on that as well, or add to that, I want to thank our Board of Health, expressly our Director of Public Health, Amanda, and our Chairman of the Board of Health, Bob Mazakelli, because they absolutely implemented this. They did it at no cost to our town budget. We appropriated money that did not get spent, so they really went above and beyond to make sure that this got investigated, tested, and reported very well.
Yeah, the turnaround was great. It was, I believe, a week, so it was very impressive and very helpful as well, too, I think, put a lot of people at ease as to what came from that leak, so on we go.
Just have one announcement, or shout-out to the staff and students at Woodland for the art show they had this week. It was a bit of an adventure with no electricity. It was in the, in that windstorm. I can't remember what day it was now, Tuesday, I believe. They lost power for a while, and of course, as it was, they sent the message out that said the art show was gonna be canceled. A minute later, the electricity came back and they were able to hold it, but it was very, very well-attended. I don't know if there was any parking spots left. There were so many families and students there, so great show.
Yeah, thank you. I can't believe I forgot about actually being there. The place was packed. It was actually pretty impressive, and the art, even from, you know, 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders, is fantastic, so thanks for bringing that up. Alright, we'll go to invitation to speak, and I do not believe we have anyone for that tonight. That brings us to Agenda 4, which is the last day of school for the district, but also for Woodland, as I believe, a separate date.
Yeah, I can talk to that. Yeah, sure. So the last day for grades, K through 2 and 6 through 12, it's Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, and for Woodland, it's Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. And this is due, we have district-wide snow day on February 6th, and if you remember back in December, we had a water main break that impacted Woodland. We didn't have any water to Woodland, so we had to close Woodland only on that day. So we have had this happen before. It's never ideal, but the Woodland students, I think, will enthusiastically be in school on Wednesday, June 18th, while the rest of the district is starting their summer vacation. So we just need a vote to...
Both days or half-days?
Correct.
Alright.
I will motion to accept the days of, last days of school based off of the recommendation of the superintendent.
Excellent motion by Brendan. Second by John. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. That is unanimous. Onto Item 5, the School Committee Superintendent Operating Protocols. So this is not new to anybody here except for, I would imagine, Derek. So this is essentially a statement that the School Committee and the Superintendent make to take our roles very seriously in interacting and trying to do what's best for the district and the town and the community. I'll just read just the major bullets here, which are that we're essentially promising to demonstrate professional and collegiate relations with one another, dedicate ourselves to establishing and maintaining effective communication, and support the educational welfare and wellbeing of all students. You guys have this to read in your packet as well, and there is a hard copy over here, if anybody would like to sign that after the meeting. So that is something we'll take care of later on in terms of the signature. If you have any questions on that, obviously, we can address that. Are there any comments or questions on that? We're gonna pass over Agenda Item 6 for the discussion on high school campus aids. Dr. Oatland could not be here tonight, but he is lined up for the May 1st meeting, so we will address that one on May 1st. Which brings me to the general chairperson update. So I'll ask you guys to open up the Subcommittee Assignments document that we have attached here. I'll start by saying there are basically no changes to this, other than Derek has volunteered to slot into the two spots that Robin was filling last year, so he'll cover SIC Bank and he will step in on policy as well. Any questions or comments in terms of this? We can work that out now. And there are two changes that I'm proposing we do make. I'll start with the IT Technology one. That Subcommittee, I believe, was formed ways back. I know John could give us a history lesson if anybody really cared, but essentially, I believe it was before we had a dedicated leader of technology in this district, and now that we have one, Michael and I have been sitting on it, I believe, for the last four years. The interaction, that's quite the grunt. The interaction was, I would say, we had a couple meetings, but it wasn't frequent. We haven't met in the last year. I don't believe it's necessary. I talked to Michael about it. He believes the same. So my recommendation would be to see if the committee would be in favor of dissolving that Subcommittee, as I don't see a need for it anymore. Not sure if that needs a vote.
Alright, I can just speak to that. Not disagreeing with anything you've said. I was on the original incarnation of that Subcommittee. That's when we had a IT Director that was split between townside and schoolside. Then we had a transition where we had a townside and a separate schoolside, and the individuals are not pertinent to the conversation, but I do agree that it's not needed. We had a lot, we've had a lot of upgrades in the 10 years since it was formed and I originally sat on it, but you guys are far more advanced into what's been going on lately, and I don't, I agree, it's not, it's probably not necessary at this point, and it was very necessary back then. I mean, that's back when we were trying to put Chromebooks out there. Now, I mean, that was our first, one of the earlier initiatives, right? So, but yeah, it's, I think the timeline of that Subcommittee has passed. So I agree with everything. I just wanted to provide a little bit of background.
I move to dissolve the IT Technology today.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Chris. All in favor? How many guys? Six in favor and one abstention. Sorry, five in favor and one abstention. Accountant Meg should know here. I'm gonna make a...
She's probably supportive, though.
She would, yeah. I will make a similar recommendation for marketing and communication. I talked about that one, too. I sat on that one last year. We had two meetings, but for the most part, our Director of Technology, Grants, and...
Communication.
Communication, there it is. Handles a lot of that, even when it was Nancy Pryor, it was really just reviewing what she was already doing, so I didn't feel that there was any value when I was there. I don't believe there's been even any meetings on it in the last year. So, again, if there's no need to have these things, then why keep them? So, thoughts on that one?
More thoughts. So I was here, again, when that was established. That predates both Tim now and Nancy previous. There was certainly some benefit to it over the years, but I think that that time has passed as well, so I agree with it.
Excellent. There are motion to dissolve the marketing and communications.
So moved.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Brendan. All in favor? Five in favor and one abstention.
Can I just make one other point of order?
Please, yeah.
We're talking about subcommittees, and we probably here at the table realize this. Some of these are recognized subcommittees by the state in the statutes. These, other subcommittees here that we're dissolving were ad hoc, so to speak, so I think it's somewhat of a distinction to just point out to everybody involved that these were never required. These were necessary at the time and we're just dissolving them today.
Thank you. I think that is important. The only ones we have, you know, contract-related are Labor and Management and SIC Bank, and obviously there are some for policy and budget that I believe the state recognizes. So I'll read what we have remaining, and obviously these will be posted on the website as well. So we will have Policy, which will be Michael, Brendan, and Derek. Budget is going to be John, Megan, and Michael. Facilities will be Chris, John, and myself, and then we have Milford TV Board Representative, which is gonna be Jonathan Capice again. And then in terms of the MTA contract, Subcommittee's Labor and Management will be Megan and Chris, and SIC Bank will be Derek. So I will obviously work with Melissa to get this document updated. We can get that posted. One other comment I would make, for Policy, Budget, and Facilities, I'm going to make the suggestion that those groups get together and identify a Chair of the Subcommittee to work with Administration, set the agenda, put the focus out there for what's gonna happen for the next year. Last year, I think I tried to juggle a lot of that, and that was maybe a little too much to try to do to keep everything organized. So I think the best way to go about this is have somebody focusing on those pieces and juggling that. So when you guys meet, that would be ideal to identify that. You can obviously just do a simple appointment in one way or another. John?
Just another comment. I'm full of them tonight, apparently. While, you know, I've consulted with Town Council, former Town Council, Special Town Council, Jerry, on this. You don't have to appoint them, but I think it's very beneficial to appoint them. Like, anybody can chair any individual Subcommittee meeting, but it'll be much more productive to, like, as we've done. We've loosely had you chair our Facilities Subcommittee, and you've done so well, but it would, I do, I agree, it's more beneficial to just appoint a Chair or vote a Chair and do it in that fashion. So I'm just agreeing with you, basically.
Thank you.
But I'm substantiating it. I'm trying to anyways.
Any comments or questions on Subcommittee? Objections to where you have been placed? No?
Okay.
Alright, cool.
We get t-shirts, so...
Yeah, yeah. Michael will make those, pay for them, all that fun stuff.
Derek, there's no t-shirt.
There's no t-shirt. Yeah, you gotta wait until you get to the first meeting. Alright, so the other, you do get a nameplate, though, and you already have it, so that's the end of, that's the end of the handouts. The other item I had on here last meeting, we talked about the roof, and I believe that I brought probably too many pieces of information at the same time, made it a little confusing. So the Subcommittee kind of met today, which I unfortunately cannot be a part of. I'm gonna ask Chris to kind of summarize the discussion, but this is around the article that we pulled specifically to repair the sections of the roof that were leaking. Pretend everything I said last about assessments didn't happen, okay? Go ahead.
Chris, do you want to hand the word, or do you want...
Yeah, so, no, so we had a, we had a long Facility Subcommittee meeting today, and the roof piece is the part that we didn't talk about. We had about eight Agenda items. I'm not joking. This is, I mean, it's funny, but it's not funny. We had about eight items. We didn't cull together all the information that you sent and all the information I asked for at the last meeting. Basically due to time constraints, I think, Chris and Melissa want to offer any of it insight, we didn't pull that all together. We do have five, six, or seven more updates that we're gonna hit later.
Okay.
The roof wasn't one of them, and there's a lot there to pull together, and we didn't get it pulled together today.
Well, yeah, Matt and I had a quick conversation because he wanted me to be up to speed on it, since he didn't make that meeting. So I guess, Matt, you want me to just go over the quick kind of overview from that, where we're at, where we're going?
Yeah, 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 that would be the whole thing.
So, you know, obviously, there's two components. There's the repair, and then there's the further look at the overall roof assessment. So we are going forward with the repairs over the entrance section and over the hallway. So those are the two areas where the, there was significant leakage that happened, so that will go through the repair process. There is a daily rate, and then there is a kind of an up-to amount that we have there. I just don't know what those amounts are off the top of my head. So, again, it will not exceed that amount. So once that daily rate hits that ceiling, then the work will, in a sense, stop. So just so we are aware of it, and that vendor doesn't continue to move on and on and on, so we're just aware of the costs overall. Then the other component, obviously, is the full roof assessment. So Carlos has gone through and has received a couple quotes, so it'll be on, in a sense, Carlos to work with his preferred vendor cost-wise and relationship-wise to do that full roof assessment. And that, I can't remember what that amount is off the top of my head.
It was between $16,000 and $18,000.
Yeah, not huge costs, and all that, if I recall, can be covered within our budget.
So...
We don't have to go out and ask for more money from town meeting. We can handle it in our maintenance budget.
And that, I think that's the important part to bring back around, is the article that we put forward has $0 on it. The recommendation by Administration, by the Finance Director as well, was to pass on that for now, because we're covering initial repairs on our budget now. If things turn out to need more, we will get it set up for the fall town meeting. So that's where we stand right now. The Finance Director did say if we needed money for the repairs and we had some sort of idea of a ballpark, we would need to get that sooner than later, and I don't know that we're gonna have that information in time.
So with that, obviously, John and I never really touched upon it.
With that, I don't think there's an update, other than a recap of what we talked about last week, because we didn't cull this all together.
Right.
We wanted to, but we did a lot of other work.
So that'll, that'll be where we'll leave that for now. Anybody have any questions or thoughts on this? We'll leave it there for now, and that's it. I do believe, well, I'll leave the update, actually, you don't have this because you guys talked about it. I do believe the work is planned to start on the repairs next week, because the weather this week threw off their schedule.
It's just been raining the last couple weeks, so I think Carlos has got them set up for next week.
Great. Alright.
Would you want to adjust the agenda and continue talking about facilities, or just keep it as a Subcommittee update further down on the agenda, now that we opened that door? I'm okay either way.
Why don't we keep with the agenda so that we don't have poor Carol sitting here listening to rooftop for the next hour and a half? And then we'll come back around.
Fair enough.
So let's move on to Report of the Superintendent Schools with the MSBA Project Update.
Yes, mine's very brief. We submitted the final three documents for the eligibility period, which is the designation of the eligibility, and that's the person who's the key contact, enrollment certification, and the feasibility study budget. So these are the last three pieces that we're responsible for, for the eligibility study in terms of what we turn into the MSBA. We will be receiving the feasibility study agreement from the MSBA later this month. Then we'll have an opportunity to review it, have the Town Council take a look at it, and the MSBA Board will vote on it at their June meeting. The next step in the process is the feasibility study and schematic design, which will take place, you know, most of the '25, '26 school year, and maybe a little beyond, depending on the scope of work and kind of what we, what we kind of finalize on. But, you know, this eligibility period went extremely well. I think a lot of people contributed to it, so I want to thank all of them, and, you know, this is, this is a milestone, or it's close to a milestone, but it's the very first step in a multi-step process, in a multi-year process. But we're moving along the way we should be moving along, which is very positive news. And the MSBA said, you know, the date of April 28th is kind of like a placeholder, so if it comes back a couple days later, or a couple days before, we'll get it. We'll have, you know, ample time to review it as a school system and as a community, and then we'll move forward and it'll get voted in June. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Pretty straightforward.
Alright, that works for me.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Alright, we'll move on...
We're getting there.
To the Report of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to invite Carol. We've invited Carol here today to basically provide an overview for everybody in the room, and if you have questions about our literacy instruction, K-8, I think it's important that you, you all have the information that you need in case folks ask you questions about the warrant article that we have going up. I felt that Carol is way more qualified to talk about that than I am, but that's why Carol's here today. Carol's, we talked about, she's gonna have a nice 10-minute overview and try to get you the information that you need. If you have questions, please ask or anything. I think that you'll find that this is exactly the way that we need to go with this warrant article.
Well, thanks for having me. I appreciate tabling the roof discussion to allow me to say my piece. I just wanted to say, you know, the goal of today is to give you an overview of the curriculum landscape in literacy and talk about how the warrant proposal for expeditionary learning for literacy curriculum fits into the scope of literacy in Milford Public Schools. You can see on the slide here, we have our district commitment to literacy with our literacy vision that really highlights the, the opportunity for all students every day to engage in these activities. And as we all know, it's critical for everything you do in school, in life, and beyond. It's the foundation of pretty much everything. The next slide is from DESI's Mass Literacy website. It provides guidance on the core components of the literacy block. This is specifically for K-3, and then I'll talk about how the curriculums we have in place fit into this, these core components, and how specifically where expeditionary learning will fit within this scope. So on the next slide, we see the K-2 District Literacy Framework. Essentially, in K-2, there are two fundamental literacy blocks with about 60 minutes allocated to each. The first literacy block is dedicated to the foundational skills, which is outlined in that Core Components of DESI's Literacy Block. This is where we currently have curriculum in place. We have HEGARDY, which is a phonological awareness curriculum, and phonological awareness is the ability to understand, manipulate, recognize sounds. It's a very critical precursor to early reading. HEGARDY provides explicit instruction in this. It's research-based. We also have FUNDATIONS, which is a research-based phonics program, and phonics is the ability to make connections between letters and sounds, eventually leads to decoding and spelling and reading whole words and connected text. So we've had curriculum in place for this block for several years now. The second literacy block is what I really want to speak to where EL fits in. So that is, if we think about the DESI Core Components Framework, it's the complex text and writing. We currently don't have a cohesive curriculum in place. We have a lot of teacher-created materials, and while the materials reflect tremendous efforts on behalf of our teachers, it has been difficult to horizontally align. So that has been resulting in some lack of consistency in instruction, challenges for teachers who, like special educators or EL educators, who may work across multiple classrooms. So this literacy block is where the expeditionary learning will fit in, and that is geared towards literary text, informational text, building vocabulary, making meaning, inferences, all those things that go into the language comprehension part of literacy instruction. So if we think of the two, like the... So, if we think of the two, like, the, the foundational skills block is learning to crack the code. And the second block is even for kids who cannot crack the code yet, they are still getting exposure to rich, content-driven text that is gonna expand their background knowledge, their vocabulary, um, give them opportunities to speak about really complex ideas and develop their critical thinking. Um, the next two slides are just outlining what foundations is, um, where it fits, why it matters. Same thing with Hegarty. And then, just again, an, an overview of where expeditionary learning will fit in K to five. Um, in grades three to five, it's not necessarily broken out into two distinct blocks because the mass frameworks for foundational skills are really driven in K two. Um, the foundational skills for grade three is more geared toward morphological analysis, um, Greek and Latin roots and word study, and less explicit phonics and phonological awareness instruction. Um, so at grades three and four, the expeditionary learning will fit into the ELA block. At grade five, it will fit into the reading block. Um, again, right now, currently, teachers are creating their own lessons and units. Um, it's a huge lift for them to constantly be creating materials. Uh, expeditionary learning is a research-based program. Um, and the design of this program is a little different than the previous generations of reading comprehension programs that were very much skills-driven, like, let's find the main idea, let's do the beginning, middle, and end of a story. It hits all those very important key standards, but it also systematically gives students exposure to, like, really rich content um, while they are acquiring those literacy skills. Research shows that students, especially those who are economically disadvantaged, lack the same background knowledge as some of their peers. And background knowledge has a huge impact on reading comprehension. So, if I gave everyone here an article on, um, biochemistry, unless you have that background, it's gonna be a struggle to access it, no matter what you've been taught about, where to find the main idea, and how to use context clues. So, systematically spiraling, um, the knowledge from one grade to another will set the students up not only in literacy, but for other content area learning in science and social studies and other domains. Um, there's writing embedded throughout the curriculum, so it's not like a separate thing. Students are gonna be constantly learning to write about the texts and topics they're, um, reading about. And, um, moving forward to six, eight, we are in year one of implementation of Amplify ELA. And while it's not necessarily completely vertically aligned, the pedagogy of the curriculum design is similar, that it is content-heavy in providing background knowledge and spiraling, um, content from one grade level to another. This year, um, our grade seven students read about brain science and Phineas Gage, and they had this great opportunity to zoom with the curator of the Harvard Med School Museum. So, they're acquiring all this information about, um, accessing really dense informational texts, but also making some real, nice, real-world connections to beyond the classroom. Um, so, the, the goal with this, this initiative is really to ensure that we have a cohesive program. Right now, we have our foundational skills already in place, but that second component has been missing. And that's what EL education is going to fulfill. Um, if we look to our goals for twenty-five, twenty-six, it's really, next year is gonna be prioritizing the implementation of EL education, um, allowing our teachers to learn the curriculum. Um, of course, learning anything new is challenging. Taking away what you've done for years is difficult. So, we intend to support our teachers and give them grace as they accomplish this huge undertaking. Um, we will look at assessment data for the curriculum embedded assessments. Um, we'll look at our I-ready data and our MCAS data. It, it's difficult to really hang your hat on that data in year one because we're still learning all the ins and outs of the curriculum. Um, but it's not something we will, you know, just lay by the wayside. We'll continue to track that. In twenty-six, twenty-seven, the goal is to continue, um, focusing on the implementation of expeditionary learning, like, looking at some tighter pacing, um, adding more, um, adjusting as needed based on what we learned in year one, um, and refining and enhancing tier-one instructional practices. So, as we continue to support EL, a new focus area can be, um, unpacking best practices and looking closer at that foundational skills block. So, we're not, we have to keep focus on both things simultaneously. Um, but it's, that's a huge undertaking. So, we're never taking the gas off one area for the sake of the other. We have to keep full throttle on everything. Um, but just knowing where we're headed, um, that's kind of where we're looking for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Also, looking at, um, with expeditionary learning, with Hegarty, with foundations, um, analyzing the schedule to see if there's any adjustments that need to be made for, um, an intervention block, or how we're making sure we can meet the needs of all students, those who are at grade level, those who are above grade level, and those who are below grade level. Um, making sure we're really promoting, um, acceleration across all domains. And then, if we can think way out to twenty-seven, um, twenty-eight, you know, just continued focus on providing all students with grade-level core curriculum. Um, and then looking at making sure we are creating clear delineation between tier-one instruction, which is for all students, and tier-two instruction, which is for students who may be, um, needing extra at-bats with grade-level content or skills they have not mastered yet. Um, literacy is a huge puzzle that needs many things. Uh, there's the Scarborough's reading rope. I didn't bring my pipe cleaner reading rope to show you. Someday, I will, if you wanna see it, I'm happy to show you. Um, but it's, it's a rope that's made of many strands, and we have to keep weaving them together simultaneously. So, that's kinda, that's, that's the big picture of how this budgetary ask fits into the scope of literacy in the district. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Yeah.
Thank you. So, um, I think we're all, well, we, I know we are, we're all supportive of literacy. Um, and this is just another, um, it's great information to further that, right? Piece that I think's missing for me is that when we go to the town, it's like, hey, we, we need a lot of money from you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what's the metric to go back to the town and say, this was successful? And i- i- in all here, I, I just don't see any of that. So, that's really important for us to know, what does success look like in the next four to five years?
I think we'll be able to look at our I-ready data, um, specifically in the domains of informational text and, um, literature, like, the overall comprehension and vocabulary. That's what this program is geared to target. Additionally, grade-three MCAS, um, or our state assessment scores will give us a, a litmus test for the, um, the writing component as well as the, the reading.
So, I'm sorry to, to push a little harder in this.
That's okay.
For both of you. So, to, to say, I, I think it might be this, that, that's great, but I wanna know, what is it? What, what is the goal that we're shooting for, for that success? Is it a, you know, I-ready scores to move up a certain percentage? Is it movement in these particular areas of, of I-ready? Like, what is this specific ask, or what, what are we, you know, trying to measure to make sure it's successful of?
Sure.
So, if, if you don't have it tonight, that's perfectly fine, I just.
I don't, I don't have an act, like, I don't have a quantifiable number, but the, the end goal is to have majority-plus of our students reading on grade level as indicated by I-ready data.
Okay. Um, is that broken down by the, the three or four years that we're playing to go over? What's to, to see progress?
I, I can certainly break it down, like, what we expect to see in year one, year two, year three. Um, with any implementation, it's, it's gonna take a couple of years to yield.
Super understandable. Like, so, I'm thinking of it, you know, going back to the math, right? We had this, you know, nice, nice, uh, spread out graph, what to expect per year, right? And so, to make sure that things are on track as a school committee over the four or five years, whatever it is. Say, hey, we expect this year one, we expect this year two, we expect this year three. So, when these committees change.
Yep.
We even go back to the committee saying, hey, well, this is normal. You know, and so, I, I, I think that's the piece that I'd like to see next in this, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think, I think what Mike's asking is, it, it's difficult to project because it's based on performance. And i- i- we can't just say you're, you're gonna get to this certain level based on these materials and this instruction, right? I mean, it's, it's, we might have a hope, but it's, and we might have a goal, but it's, I think it's a little unfair of a question with no due respect.
Yeah, I thought you were referring to numbers, but like, movement, right? Like, we should see movement in, in skills.
We wanna turn things upwards.
Yeah, right, yeah, but, yeah.
I just, I just suggest bringing down to even like, where are we at right now, right? So, you're asking, Mike, where, where do you expect to be? But right now, we're, we're below level, so therefore, that's why we need this. So, when we present at town meeting, it's, it's, our, our, our numbers are low. Our a- our average, averages are low. When the expectation is to.
Raise the floor.
Get above those average numbers. And based on research, right, this is the best program.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think, right, 'cause quantifying numbers at town meeting.
Yeah.
Is gonna be tough to do, but we can tell them where we're at right now and where we're hoping to go to.
Which will, is great, but yeah, and so, to, to join your point, I'm not looking specifically at I-ready numbers, more, more like, how are we measuring movement, if that makes sense, right?
Yeah.
Like, we should see skills change or get better or something. Some, something that shows us that it's successful, so that, so after four or five years, we're not surprised, oh, shoot, we waited four years and then poof, oh, it didn't work, right? So, something to see, so.
Except for the problem that the student body changes. If we have the same, um, four thousand students, great, we can measure it. But when we, when we lose a thousand, we gain a thousand, it's, I don't think you can quantify that. I don't, I think you're asking too much.
Brendan, Brendan's got one next.
I'm gonna change directions as a TV here. I agree that you're saying, Michael, like, I'd love to see the baseline data and then what we would expect. Obviously, an upward trend is what we'd expect. Um, focusing on where this is being implemented, it seems like this is actually gonna be a really positive effect for the students who entered into our school system during the pandemic. They're, you know, kindergarten, you know, first, second grade, whatever. This is actually gonna impact them the most. And we know from data across the nation that those students are actually pretty far behind compared to their predecessor, or the previous sets of students at those times. So, I guess, could you talk a bit more about that component in any aspect? I think that's something that could be beneficial for town meeting as well.
Sure. I mean, if we think of those students who are now, like, in third and fourth grade, um, they're at that pivotal stage of where they're switching from learning to read to reading to learn. Um, and if we think about student experiences during the pandemic and, um, the challenges of, you know, hybrid and remote learning, um, kids didn't have real books in their hands. This, this program uses authentic, diverse, really rich literature and informational text. Um, so, kids will be engaging with real books every day about everything. Um, I was just looking at the, the, the content of the modules. Everything from, um, cartography in kindergarten to, you know, um, the decisions we make about money in grade three. So, these are, these are not just skills that are applicable to, you know, the ELA classroom. They're, you know, applicable to, um, high school classes and outside of school, so.
That's awesome. I'm glad, glad to hear that, 'cause I think that's something that I worry about are those students who came into our school system at a disadvantage, right? Just because of the circumstances that they're at, not being able to see the teacher speaking because of the masks that are on, or their peers that, um, that their masks are on. So, I'm happy to hear that they're gonna get physical books.
Yep.
Put these laptops away, the Chromebooks away a little bit, and actually get to, uh, you know, dive deep in, so. Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Yes. So, we're at town meeting, and, and the, the question's going to be.
Yeah.
Well, the question's gonna be, literacy's been around forever. I learned in basic literacy. Why do we need to invest three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a new literacy program? Right? There's someone that's gonna get up there to ask that. They're gonna say, I've learned to read fifty years ago, and I'm fine, right? I learned. So, you're at town meeting, you hear that question. How would, I guess, how would you answer that? So, that way, we hear it and we can help.
Sure.
Offset that, that question.
I, I think we need to just affirm that if we think about, um, what students need to constantly be challenged. They need to be presented with grade-level complex text that they have to grapple with, and.
Remember, we're at town meeting, too, right? So.
You, you've already lost them.
Right, right? Because you know, you know the, the lingo inside and out.
Yep.
Right? So, and, and I'm challenging you on this, right? Because you're gonna.
Can I jump in, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear what you're getting.
Speak to the, to the non-teaching crowd.
One of the things we're gonna do is, we're gonna provide accessible talking points for the committee to be able to answer specific questions for town meeting. That's one of the things we're gonna do after this meeting.
Okay.
That we talked about, didn't we?
No, that's great, yeah, so.
I wa- I was gonna jump in on that, too. I do plan on, he doesn't know it yet, but I have a note in my calendar to have a meeting with, with Craig about prepping for this, to just anticipate and be ready to have some sort of.
Right.
Supportive statements and some information, but, you know, I, I, the, the importance of being able to speak to why we need this.
Yeah.
Instead of just saying, give us money and, and expecting it to go through.
Yeah.
I understand that, but I also understand John's points of it's really hard.
Yeah.
It's really hard to put a number on it. I know we heard it with math. They basically said, don't even ask me if this is successful in the first three years because I don't know.
Right.
And I would imagine this is the same thing. Um, and, you know, just to your point of, of the person saying, oh, I learned fifty years ago.
Yeah.
I'm working through math with my fourth grader now, and I have absolutely no idea how they're teaching how to do this.
Yeah.
But it's working.
Right.
So, whatever way they're being taught now is effective.
Maybe, yeah. But I think this is, I think this is a really good exercise. And it's, you know, it's not giving anybody our time, but this is a good exercise.
Yeah.
We are gonna get asked these questions, you know, and the thing is, well, if it's not broke, then why are we trying to fix it, right? And that's gonna be like, oh, okay. Um, I know why, we know why, uh, but to, to explain that to, to town meeting, I think, will be, um, we need like a sentence.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have, we'll have bulleted talking points for everybody in the school committee.
I'm gonna put your piece in to Kevin and Craig on the stand up there.
If I could just say one thing, if we think about how to explain it and we look at the graphics of the literacy blocks, where we see expeditionary learning, currently, there is nothing. And I think that.
The materials, there's no materials.
There's no materials.
Our teachers.
That was the first takeaway to Brendan's question, when you said, you're, we're, it's no, it's no electronics, it's physical books, which is great. That will be a big seller, right there.
Well, there's no, there's no district cultivated materials. Teachers have been taking it upon themselves.
Right.
To get materials. And to, um, Carol's earlier point, kids in this classroom aren't learning the same thing that kids in that classroom are learning, that kids in that classroom are learning, the kids in that classroom are learning, and when they come to, they're in third grade, they go to fourth grade, they've had five, five different experiences.
Yeah. And to that, right, when you explain it to us and you use the buzzwords, the horizontal and vertical alignment, I understand what you're talking about. It's.
Grade level.
If we.
If we use that.
The statement, yeah, the statement simply is, we're providing high-quality instructional materials to support reading growth and learning at the elementary level. That's what this supports.
I think there's more than that. That's, that's a sales pitch.
As soon as you say high-quality instructional materials, my first thought is, well, don't they get that already?
Right.
Right? So, it's like, oh, now we're going down this rabbit hole of like, saying, well, actually, we don't provide high quality. Why not? So, yeah, so anyways, these are really good things to think about, um, yeah, really make it simple.
I just, I just wanna spotlight what you said about the rich and, and diverse text. Like, for kids, I just know that it's very easy to be bored by a certain subject and topics and, and, but if you have, there's something that's something for everybody. So, someone's gonna read something, and it's really gonna catch them, and it's gonna engage them. And we're looking for engagement. Uh, so, I, to me, the imagination, the creativity sparks by having such a rich and diverse, uh, uh, book to open and read. So, to me, that's, like, to Brendan's point, to having something physical, having something that is shared throughout. So to me, that's like to Brendan's point, to having something physical, having something that is shared throughout these these age groups, I think is only going to help.
All right, any other points of this you guys would like to discuss?
Yeah, I mean, I I do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, we have to pass this through town meeting. I don't want to convince them because we're trying to sell them a a used car. This is what we believe in. I mean, that's what I believe in, and I may have sounded objectionatory, that's harder than a word, but when I was talking to Mike, I don't.
We'll get you with the expeditionary learning.
It's not, it's not black and white numbers driven, it's it's what it's achieving. And and I do support this and I think we support this and it's it it's it's just not a sales pitch at town meeting, it's it's a belief. And and I believe in it and I'm I'm gonna support it and I think everybody else here will, but we get caught up sometimes in the politics or whatever else you wanna call it. But we either believe in it or we don't, like.
Well, yeah, but we have to explain it, yeah.
We have to explain it, but but those aren't the words I was hearing here. I was hearing sell it, this, that, the other thing, so.
Yeah.
I'm 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 not, what I wanna hear is buy in, not sell it, buy in.
Fair.
All right.
So.
Far more spirited than I expected.
So, yeah, and and going back, administration, so the talking points, because obviously, you know, I'm not sure who's town meeting members in the room, but I think if not, all of us.
So, yeah, we we talked about it.
To be able to to have those talking points and whether or not that's at meeting or not, but.
You have the high level with the the slides.
Yeah.
Next, we were gonna, we were gonna listen to questions and we were just gonna give you the five points.
And, you know, I think that.
Be able to go.
That would be extremely appreciative, if that's what.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So I I know we kind of moved from measurements and then town meeting, which is great. But but I still do think there's some value of looking at, you know, four or five years and how, what does success look like? Is it a number, is it something else, is it, you know, something, you know, just so we know, you know, there's.
So what Mike's saying is he wants those talking points, not for town meeting.
I'm okay with five years, I'm good.
Yeah, like, you know, but I I'm sure that there's a vision, right, otherwise, right? So, yeah.
I mean, one metric we've used this year as the implementation of Amplify at Stacy is just classroom walkthroughs and ensuring in every classroom, students have grade level material that's giving them opportunities for high quality questions and tasks. And it's not, it's not a a test, it's it's observational data that we've collected using a a normed tool, so.
That's great, too. It it to me, it's not about I read, it's whatever you guys think is right to make sure we have success at some point.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Anyone that feels free to reach out and I'm happy to answer.
Good luck with your race.
All right, thank you. That'd be easy.
Yeah, compared to this, yeah.
You'd run a marathon in what, a week?
Yeah.
Have fun.
Thank you.
All right.
This might be the last one.
Changing gears, onto the report of the school business administrator, quick one.
There's no specific discussion today and just a personnel update for your review.
All right, thank you for that, and that brings us to the lengthy consent agenda, which I fear the longer I make it, the worse it gets. No, this should be easy. We have, I have a lot to read, but in short, we have a whole bunch of minutes.
And a quick, quick thought.
And then a warrant, yes.
Or Derek. Do you know what a consent agenda is? It's a bunch of like simple stuff that should go easy in one vote.
It's happened one time in twelve months.
Yes, it's it's one, it's one. We used to vote, we used to vote each one separately.
So it's omnibus?
Yeah, 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 so, yeah, so it's.
To be very fair, John wasn't at one of those meetings.
So we used to vote on each one separate, now we have consent agenda, things that are like routine. But if you wanna pull something out, you can.
They're basically ministerial, so you you can, I I'm not legal advisor, you can vote on them, you can abstain, it's it's lumping this all together to get it done, I think.
Yeah, the the point at the state level is that it's nothing contentious or I'm missing the right word here.
Yeah, administrative.
Basically, it's the boring administrative stuff that nobody wants to hear about.
All right.
So with that said, we have four, sorry, five sets of minutes that are approval and or approval and release. And then there's some that were approved way back that are just ready to be released. My note on the executive session minutes, those were all cleared by town council as being okay to release as well, so we got the thumbs up there. So before I start, are there any comments on section B with those five sets of minutes, any need to pull them? All right. All right, so the consent agenda tonight is going to include the following, the approval of warrants, there are fourteen and the amount of one million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and eighty-five cents. There is the approval of minutes from April third, two thousand and twenty-five budget meeting, April third, two thousand and twenty-five regularly scheduled school committee meeting. The April third, two thousand and twenty-five executive session, these are approval only. The April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five budget meeting and the April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five executive session, those are also approval only. The following list is mostly has been approved and they are all for release as well. January eighteenth, May second, June sixth, September fifth, September eleventh, and September nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. October twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty-four is marked as needing approval and release. Then we have November seventh, November twenty-first, December fifth, and December nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. And then January ninth, February eleventh, and February twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-five. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brendan, second by Michael, all in favor. Look at that, first one at the end.
I wanted that motion, by the way, thanks, Brendan.
Sorry. Sorry.
Thank you very much, that was excellent. Subcommittee updates, I heard there might be something from the facilities, guys.
Facilities are real productive today.
So there there was a facilities subcommittee meeting today. Our newly appointed chair, Chris, and I were there, Matt was unavailable, but I'm gonna do the report and Chris is gonna chime in if that's okay with you.
Much, somehow, on the chair, but he's gonna report, so it's good.
I'm I'm reporting, right? It's just an update. So we had a number of discussions. I don't know, I wasn't even aware until recently, but there were some damages to the concession stand at the turf field at the high school. It was not winterized profit properly. We just found out about this, even though this clearly happened months ago. My understanding is that there were water pipes that burst coming into the place because it wasn't, they weren't drained, they weren't blown out, they weren't whatever else. We don't, all we have is somewhat anecdotal report and that toilets were burst and replaced. We don't, again, we don't have a report, I think we should as a is is the, I'm gonna use this phrase, I'm probably gonna use it ten times tonight, as the custodians of all these facilities, this school committee, all of us, all seven of us, and the administration is probably aware, or some members of the administration, we don't know what went wrong. It's okay, mistakes happen, somebody, you know, something, something went wrong, but I don't, we don't know why we weren't told. We don't know why we have limited information and now apparently there were repairs made. We don't have any plumbing permits within the town of Milford for the repairs. So we're going, we're actually requesting more information on that, some sort of report from the director of facilities or the superintendent. That was one agenda item. Going back to the Stacy School Heating, we had reports back in December of the heat was not adequate. It was too hot, too cold, and and a bunch of other complaints without getting too deep into it. Individually, I requested from our maintenance supervisor, director, whatever his title is, to tell our committee what it will take to get the system operational to the extent that it was in nineteen ninety-five, give or take a year, when it was put in. I haven't got that, but it was an individual individual request, so there there's no requirement for that to be fulfilled. But our subcommittee is now making that request official. Can somebody please tell us what it's gonna take to get Stacy Heating System or HVAC System back to the original design operations? Sub-suffer from that, I guess, is that there was, and this is what I did not have time to get to today after our subcommittee meeting, there was town meeting money appropriated, to 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 the best of my knowledge, to update the HVAC controls at Stacy Middle School. We don't know what was done, we'd like a report, we'd like a report on what was spent and what is left. And this is high level, not not really granular or down into the weeds, but we don't know. And 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 the town as a whole does not know. And I don't expect any answers tonight, we know we're not gonna get any tonight, but going on, more 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 questions. I made a request, I I I asked a question three or four weeks ago about, I heard a report from several people in town, several employees, that we have bathrooms that are not operational within the district, here at Milford High School and possibly at other schools. Just today, I got an answer that I I don't have the information at hand. I didn't think it was that difficult a request, but we have bathrooms that aren't working. I didn't ask why they weren't working. But they're they're not working, it was three weeks, we finally got one today. So now that we know what's not working, the 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 subcommittee will see what the district needs for us to support them to get these bathrooms back functional. And this isn't a toilet or a sink, the request was which bathrooms are not working because we had these complaints, at least I did. I guess separately from that, there's been some reports or some or reports back that there's been a lot of vandalism within these bathrooms. I think separate from them not being in service, but there's, the ones that are in service have had vandalism. So we would like to request that Principal Ottland, at least at the high school, come in and speak to us about it, like, what are the problems? What are the challenges? I mean, we know they're being vandalized, but how do we, how do we solve that from a facility standpoint or maybe maybe beyond? That was number three. Number four, the Stacy elevator, right? Chris, in the past, has already requested an inspection report. I don't think he's received it, he'll, he's right here, he'll tell me yes or no, but I, as of earlier today, he hadn't. We want an inspection report delivered to this full committee or our subcommittee, right? And we also, at this point, because we're suspect on what's happened, we would like a a a copy of all the records or inspections for the last three years on this elevator, which the state does the inspections, this, we believe the district has these reports. We want a copy and if we can't get a copy from our own district, we'll reach out to the the state and the elevator inspectors to get tho those copies from them, because what, we have so many things going wrong, we're trying to figure out why they went wrong and how to stop them from going wrong in the future and how to fix them today. Similarly, we would like a copy of, the 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 facility subcommittee would like a copy of all the invoices that have been paid towards a repair of the Stacy elevator. And Chris, tell me, is it, was it just Stacy or was it all the elevators?
I think we really, we just started on on Stacy, right? So, yeah.
So there's there's a lot here, so I'm not even done. This is, this is high level, I guess, I hope. Then we get into the, we got into the topic of the cleaning contract, right? As some of us know or all of us know, we have a vendor that does, that that subcontract to cleaning at some of the schools. It's, the vendor's name, I think, is Clean Co., they're on the state building list, uh, state, I'm sorry, the state bid list. This came up over the last three or four weeks and over the last three or four years in 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 other avenues. But the question right now that we came out with today is, do we have a signed contract with a cleaning contractor? And when was it signed? And if it hasn't been signed, our request is to hold off on signing a contract to review it because while it's legal, in my mind, and in talking with our finance director and other people, sure, we can sign a cleaning contract with somebody on the state bid list. We should have a clear scope of work, we haven't in the past, and for whatever reason that is, it's, it it is what it is, right? I hate that, but it is what it is. But if we haven't signed it as of today, because when I made the request three weeks ago, I got an unsigned copy, I made a request for a signed copy, I didn't get one, so I assume it hasn't been signed today. And that's okay, nobody's doing anything wrong. But if we haven't signed one, we have two different vendors that have reached out to me that have Milford businesses and and reached out to other people. Milford businesses, Milford residents working there that would like a chance to bid. And we don't have to, the administration can certainly decide, nope, we're signing with this contract, period. If they do that, they should have a scope of work, which I don't think is is very well defined. But if they haven't, I'd like to give these other residents, taxpayers, whatever else you wanna call them, constituents, a chance to give us a bid and maybe get better services for for fewer dollars. I told you this wasn't gonna be short, I'm sorry, I don't think I'm gonna talk this long. Number six, we had a question about, we're renting a space from Emerald Irrigation, which is again a Milford Milford business, but we really didn't didn't have any substantiation on why we're renting it and what we're putting in there. And there was a, there was a meeting there last Thursday or Friday that I was not able to attend, that I intended to attend, intended to attend, that's a mouthful. But what we would like for for the, again, for the full committee, is an itemized list of equipment that we're storing there, because it wasn't very clear. And it's not a big dollar amount that we're spending on that, but we'd like to know what we're putting there. We don't, you know, this may be a practice that carried over from many years ago, that's okay, but is it the best practice? We'll we'll talk about that at some future point and maybe it's not even our purview. But there were pictures of some equipment there. We just want a complete list of what Milford, the town of Milford and Milford Puckler Schools owns that's being stored there. We already have the amount, the dollar amount, which is not a deal breaker, but it's is a, you know, as we all know, it's been mentioned many times, it's a terribly tight budget year, both last year and this year. So we had some photos that show, you know, an an air compressor, a toe behind air compressor, chairs, floor jack, snowplows. What is, what is ours in that? What isn't ours in that? Could we look to better operations or different operations to maybe put it in a storage container someplace? And through that conversation came the questions of, we have a shed at Woodland, we would like a list of the items that are stored in that Woodland shed and similarly, with the Burke Side container and the high school containers. What what do we have in there and why? And what I'm saying, we shouldn't have them, we just, we just want more information. And then as, I guess this falls under the subcommittee update, as a future agenda items, we want to have a report on, as a facility subcommittee, the condition of the Milford High School practice field conditions and the state of the irrigation functionality, operations, whatever you wanna call it, does it work, doesn't work? And if it doesn't, what's it need to be fixed? Or do we not even know what it needs to be fixed? What we didn't get to today, it was, it was here, it was talked about, but we didn't, we didn't quantify it or or accumulate it, is the Milford High School roof assessment, which we kinda talked about previ- previously or earlier tonight. So I'll leave that alone for now, because I think everybody knows what they're looking for or or what the next steps might be or should be. And then something that's been asked for for a period of time, which is a district maintenance plan. We don't have one. We've asked, I know those ones submitted to the, the, what do you call it, Chris, MSBA? And when I personally reviewed that, that was a perfectly well-written document for the MSBA. It's not a, what I would call a maintenance plan, it was fluff, to be honest. It was, it was not a maintenance plan, in my opinion, individually. Leaving that alone, we needed a maintenance plan that's submitted to this committee or to the subcommittee for not even approval, because we really can't do that, but. or to the subcommittee for not even approval, because we really can't do that, but for our own insight. And if that's the one that's gonna be submitted to us, it's, it's just falling short. And continuing, maybe it's the last, we have the Brookside addition, which has final tasks that have been hanging and hanging and hanging, and we've asked and asked and asked, and nothing's been finalized. It is most or all of us are well-aware of. So, that's my update.
Thank you. Three things. One, I shared the future agenda items tracker that I put together last year on how we just keep track of what we wanna talk about with everybody. You have access to edit it?
Correct, yeah.
You have access to edit it in terms of the policy side? So, rather than me write down all of that?
Yeah, I'm...
Put that there, please. The other two points, you mentioned vandalism concerns, and you wanna hear from Dr. Allen. He was supposed to be here tonight, and the topic of campus aides is the official title. Um, all the justification around campus aides that he has provided the last two years had to do with vandalism, so he will be speaking on that, and that's next meeting, so we'll hear about that one. Yeah, okay, Brookside point, there's one more thing that you called me on recently. The Brookside piece, the only thing I just wanted to show, the Brookside punch list piece, the final pieces are cracks in the floor, an outlet, and a access on the far end of the addition.
Correct.
That's happening next week, that was scheduled.
The school is not in session.
That was scheduled already, right? So, that, we should get an update, I hope, to your point, that this is finally done, right, the end of next week.
And without due respect, you shouldn't be giving this, this, somebody else should. Dr. McIntyre, Dr. Consigli, Carlos Pena, like, this is the closure we need, it's, it, we don't get it. We don't get the documentation, we don't get the substantiation, justification, whatever else you wanna say.
Sure. All right. Dare I ask if there's more from facilities?
No, I wanted to just thank John for going through, he compiled the list today and offered to read it out, so, obviously, it's, there's a lot, a lot that we discussed, I think there's still a lot to, to kind of hone in on and get answers, and, you know, just, again, we're just looking to, looking for the betterment of the entire school system overall, you know, we're just, we know that some of our infrastructure's aging, and just how can we assist with asking the right questions in order to budget appropriately with this? So, but these are some of the, some, you know, some of the areas that we see that we just need to really dive deeper into and get these answers, be able to explain it to the rest of you, so that way, again, we can, we can help just facilitate any sort of actions that are required.
I think what I wanna ask is, does anybody in the administration want me to put this in writing in an email in case this was all lost, because I was rambling on, on what this subcommittee's request is? Because we don't wanna come back in a month and say, "We don't have anything." Like, I mean...
Yeah, John, I think if you put it, I missed the first couple because I was using the restroom.
That's okay.
But I think I've got most of them, but if you send an email, just to kinda, as specific as possible, as fair.
I think some of the, I think Chris and I would agree, this is all like thirty-day answers, because there's no deep diving into these questions, is there? I mean, there might be further diving, but we need an initial response on all the questions that we raised and wanted to bring formally to this committee. So I'll put, I'll gladly put it all in writing, because it can't just get, "Oh, now it's September, it's gone."
Thank you.
Did you have something?
I did, I had the final update on the IT committee, actually, I forgot to mention, I met with Tim to...
I'm sorry, that's resolved.
Yeah, so we, um, I met with him about the office licenses, and so he's resolved that. So the reduced license, the government just licensed from like five hundred and fifty down to less than a hundred and fifty.
Awesome.
And, and if we go over one fifty, those teachers are already get the free version, which is a web-based version. So we're making a big change on that, so that frees up like, I think it was like fifteen to eighteen grand, so...
Awesome.
Awesome.
So that's it.
And Labor and Management met as well this week, and there wasn't, there wasn't a significant number of issues, but I've definitely shared them with the appropriate folks, and I think, you know, some of them are pretty easy fixes, some of them, you know, are more philosophical things, and we have to spend some time on them.
Cool. Future agenda items. Facilities, we'll take care of, tag of theirs on, print a list.
Chris will.
Chris will. Chris will type that, yeah. Nobody, it'll take a long time, we'd dial it for that to work, so we're not gonna get there. Anything else anybody wants to address at this time? I see nothing, that works for me. All right, so that brings us to adjournment. We will be proceeding with ending our open portion of the meeting. We do have, we do have two executive sessions scheduled for tonight. One is to discuss administrative and individual contracts, and the other is for superintendent contract negotiations. We will not be returning to open session. Need a roll call for this?
Yes.
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 And also a yes, thank you very much. Good night.